So it's seven o'clock and I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Um, Kate?
So as a preliminary matter, this is Dr. Burnham Superintendent of Schools. I will do a roll call to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Chairperson Shroka?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Bertrand?
Yes.
Secretary Leighton?
Yes.
Mr. Levesque?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Staffs, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Recording Secretary, Ms. Sue Summers?
Yes.
Business Manager, Mr. Michael Cassidy?
Yes.
Director of Special Services, Juliana Hanscom?
Yes.
Mr. Rob McGrath, LHS Principal? Do we see Mr. McGrath?
Yeah, but now he's off. He's off now.
He's here. He can't unmute his audio.
Okay. Mr. Tim Santry, Principal at the Middle School?
Yes.
Annika Scott, Assistant Principal at LMHS?
Yes.
Mrs. Heidi Champagne, Turkey Hill Elementary School Principal? Where is she?
She's here.
He's here.
She was there.
She was here.
Oh, I'll call Mr. McGrath's name again. Mr. McGrath? Oh. He's got an issue with sound tonight. Okay, he should be unmuted.
Yes. Mr. He's coming back in.
He's talking. He's muted again.
Yeah, the audio doesn't seem, and then it goes right to mute.
Yeah.
Let me call Mrs. Champagne again.
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, there she is, okay.
Mrs. Christina Gerton, Primary School Principal?
Yes.
Mr. Chad Adams, Turkey Hill and Primary School Assistant Principal?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Raboin, LMHS Teacher?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dawn Guerin, LHS Teacher?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I'll turn that over now to the Chair.
Good evening. In accordance with the requirements of open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel at a later date and that this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee is being conducted remotely. The town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, is currently following the guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread, and all town facilities are currently closed to the public. In accordance with the Governor's Order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GLC 30A subsection 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the town website on the COVID-19 Information Center page, accessed through the town manager's webpage allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting, ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lunenburg School Committee is convening by telephone conference, video conference via Zoom app, as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. For Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Heather Shroka, the Chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone. Your name before speaking. If members wish to engage colloquially with other members, please do so through the Chair. Take care to identify yourself. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comment as follows. The Chair will ask, first, ask members of the public who wish to speak, identify their names and address only. Once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. I hope everyone is feeling well. And we're just gonna go into public comment for agenda items only. Do we have any public comment from the public? Looking. I don't see any public comment. Do you see any public comment?
I do not.
Oh. Oh, okay. We have minutes to review that everyone should have received from our last meeting. You take a look at them from members where? Did you take a look at them?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Did any, do you have any questions, corrections? Did they look good? I can take a motion.
Levesque, I want to make a motion to accept minutes.
Second. This is Wendy Bertrand, second.
And the minutes are from April 7, correct?
April 8, it says.
April 8, okay.
Yes, sorry.
April 8, okay. All in favor, we need a roll call vote?
Mr. Levesque?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Mrs. Shroka?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. The superintendent's report, I believe, is going to feature all of this, the principals, correct?
No, they are a separate agenda item this evening.
Oh, oh, that's it, the bottom, okay. All right, superintendent's report.
I do have a few brief updates.
Okay.
Testing. All spring 2020 MCAS tests have been canceled. Advanced placement tests will be administered remotely online, and the high school guidance department will be coordinating that. The seal of biliteracy will also be administered remotely online, and our LMHS Foreign Language Department will be coordinating that. An update on the Student Opportunity Act. We are awaiting further information regarding the mission of our Student Opportunity Act plans. You recall that the original date by statute was April 1st. We've been advised that it will not be before May 15th, but it may be a date later than May 15th, and we're awaiting additional information from the Commissioner on that. Additionally, I would just like to note that there's a possibility that the first year funding of the Student Opportunity Act, which would be FY '21, may be up in the air at this point. We'll have to wait and see what the, what the new budget coming from, from the state looks like. Drive. Our Lunenburg Public Schools is continuing to provide lunch and breakfast to our low-income families through our Grab and Go program. And I would just like to take a moment to thank our Food Services Director, Nadine Lorenzen, and our entire food service staff for organizing and implementing this program that's going so well. The district has also maintained a partnership with Kylie's Care Kits for Kids, which provides weekend meals, and those kits are still being distributed on Fridays. Some of our staff have coordinated a food gift card drive. I'd like to thank Katie Berry, the Middle School Secretary, and Katie McGuire, the Middle School Nurse, for taking the lead on this project to support students and families. There will be a drive-through donation drop-off this Friday, April 17th, from 1:00 to 3:00 at the Passios Building. We are seeking donations of gift cards for area grocery stores or local restaurants that deliver food. Hannaford also offers online gift cards, so if that's an easier way for folks to donate, they may purchase an online gift card through Hannaford and email that gift card to either Katie McGuire at kmaguire@lunenburgonline.com or Katie Berry, that's cberry@lunenburgonline.com. And they will make sure that the gift cards are provided to the families that we know are in need of some assistance right now. And lastly, the FY '21 budget. We've had a conversation with the town manager, and she's requested that we put together a level service budget. So we are currently working to develop that budget, and as soon as we have something on that, we will bring it to you. And that's all I have for the updates.
Okay, thank you. So first item of business is the pre-K tuition adjustment?
Correct. So I... We'll unmute Mr. Cassidy. Hopefully. There he is. Hello, Mr. Cassidy.
Good evening, everyone. There is a matter that I'd like to bring to the attention of the school committee. A number of parents have reached out to the primary school administrative staff inquiring about an adjustment to the, the primary school tuition. This affects 12 families in Lunenburg. And we took a look at a proposed adjustment that the school committee would have to approve tonight. What we are recommending to the school committee is that, that we look at the quarterly or the annual payment, and we adjust the payment between a week and a week and a half for those families that have been enrolled for the entire year. That essentially is a refund or a rebate to families of $40 per week. So it can vary from family to family depending whether or not they're a two-day enrollment or a three-day enrollment. So that's why we're adjusting it to a one and a half week per family. So one challenge that we'll have is three of the 12 families did pay in full already, so we will have to issue a refund to those three families. And, and what I'm recommending is that we issue a reduction of a week and a half for, for the other nine. So if you have any questions on that? Let me know, otherwise I, a motion needs to be set to kind of adjust those, those families.
So it's 12 families, a one and a half week period. So what is the total amount of money?
I've calculated it to be about $467 of lost revenue. And why do, we came up with that week and a half. It was some of the snow days and the... There was kind of that closure period between the last day of school and the, we actually did the, started the enrichment program. So we want to be fair.
The April?
Yeah. And, well, the pre-K program did provide some enrichment, and they're doing the on, online learning for the, the pre-K students right now. So we want to give them a little adjustment for that. So that's how we came up with that.
Okay.
Week and a half.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Cassidy?
No.
No?
No. Okay. All right. Wendy, no?
No.
Okay. Okay, so I need a motion to approve that price adjustment for the 12 families in regards to the pre-K program?
This, Jim Levesque, I'm gonna make a motion to make that adjustment to those four families for the pre-K tuition.
Fine, Leighton, second.
All in favor, roll call vote?
Mr. Levesque?
Aye.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Mrs. Shroka?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. The whole business is the spring field trips. We're gonna be talking about DC first, I believe.
Yes, so let me unmute Mrs. Raboin and Mr. Santry.
Okay. And in regard to that vote, I have a question, because I have an eighth grade student. Should I not participate in a vote?
I would suggest yes, that you not participate in the vote.
Okay.
To be perceived as a conflict.
Right, so I'll abstain from just the vote, but I can participate in asking questions, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, just so everyone knows, I won't be participating in that vote. Okay, so we're gonna turn it over to who, Mr. Santry?
Well, Amy and I have been working closely with this. So Amy's gonna start off, and then we can follow in afterwards, if that's okay, Chair.
Yep. Yeah.
Okay, so I've been in contact with Mrs. Merchant quite a bit about the trip, and last time we got together, there were three potential options, and one of them was to wait it out and see what happened. I don't think there's any reason to delay a decision any further, because we're at the point right now where most of the penalties have been waived, and the few penalties that still remain, Mrs. Merchant says are small enough that she can cover. So if we were to cancel the trip right now, the parents would get back all of the money that they've paid except for their initial deposit of $250. It's going to take time to get that money back to parents, because Mrs. Merchant has to wait to be reimbursed, the money, before she can hand it out to families. So her plan, if this was the decision, is to reimburse based on the order that people sent in their original deposit. So the first 10 families who signed up would be the first 10 families to get reimbursed and so on. But that process could take weeks, and it could take up to a couple of months. So it would require patience. So that's one potential option. Another option that we've talked about is a reschedule. Either for the fall, I believe, is what we talked about last time. There are two potential weeks that this trip could be rescheduled for. One of them is September 22nd to September 25th, and the other is October 6th through October 9th. There are some concerns that Mr. Santry and I talked about regarding a reschedule. The first concern is if there's a resurgence of COVID-19, we could be in the exact same situation in the fall. It's very difficult to know how that's gonna play out. A second concern is some students are no longer going to be with the Lunenburg schools. They may have gone to different schools or Monty Tech, and then that's a big coordination effort to make that happen. I think the biggest concern that we have is doing the fall trip means we're taking freshmen out of high school in the first month of their first year of high school, which, after not having been in front of teachers for potentially up to 12 weeks at the end of this year. So there's a concern about the disruption to education that the trip might, might cause. It's also a disruption to high school teachers who are trying to get, you know, the basic rules and guidelines of their classes under control, and then all the freshmen, you know, leave. The other, you know, confusing point is then it becomes a high school trip, not a middle school trip. So who would be attending, who would be chaperoning? And I'm not sure there would be a lot of teachers who might want to chaper, middle school or high school, who might want to chaperon that trip in the first month of school when they're trying to get themselves up and running. So that's concerning. We did talk a little bit about what if we postponed until next June, but we have a similar issue there, because that's taking the kids two weeks before final exams, as the year is wrapping up. So, you know, we're a little bit wary of the reschedule, but it is still a possibility.
And is anything, Mr. Santry?
You covered it perfectly, Mrs. Raboin, and I would have to say, if I was asked for a recommendation, I would reluctantly recommend a canceling of that trip, because the rescheduling of it seems like it poses many problems, including time and learning for students in a brand-new building with brand-new teachers, which, which it would be difficult considering the COVID-19 closure that we're facing now.
So the only question that I would have then is the non-refundable $250 that parents will be asking about, because we understand the non-refundable $250 when you make a plan and one of you is canceled and you can't go, and it's just an individual family person that can't go because something happens and they back out. But when you have something like this, that's 125 families that are not getting $250 back, it's $31,000 in total, if you multiply it by the 125 families. So they'll just want to know what that $31,000 is going to.
Sure.
I can't really answer that question, although that we, Amy and I have looked into similar districts of the eighth grade trips, you know, what other agencies are doing, and it does seem kind of standard operating procedure that they are reimbursing, except for that non-refundable $250, whether that money has gone to paying employees for, you know, getting these trips going or getting the hotel or the bus fare. I'm not sure how much of that cost is. I can't speak to that. I can just speak to what the travel agency has said that they would refund parents. I, maybe Dr. Burnham and I could possibly do a follow-up on that $250, but that does seem like it's standard operating procedure for other districts in this situation.
Okay, I just wanted to get it out there, because people will be asking, that would be the one question they're asking.
Sure.
Because it's such unusual, yeah, yeah.
The only districts that I know of that are reimbursing 100% are ones where the travel agency purchased, they have their own trip insurance, so they're able to cover themselves. That's the one district I know of.
They have some trip insurance, okay.
And that's one out of...
One out of the lot, yeah.
Okay. Ms. Bertrand, Ms. Bertrand?
Well, it was, I mean, it kind of piggybacked off the question. One thing that Mrs. Raboin commented was that the vast majority of penalties are being waived. So that's still, I'm curious as to, that's a large chunk of money in coordination, and perhaps that is what is deemed for the coordination aspect, but what penalties are not being waived on, on the vendor side? I would want to know. Airlines are being incredibly flexible. Hotels, so I'm just curious, many of the places that are standard around, are free in terms of entry, so I just didn't know if anyone was able to follow up on vendors that are not, that are not waived.
I believe Mrs. Merchant said the vendors that hadn't, I'm looking at her piece right now, she is, a lot of money's already been put out. She said there were a couple, the hotel and the bus company are not yet refunding all of the penalties, from what I understand, many of the travel places, airlines and such, aren't reimbursing, they're simply rescheduling or giving you sort of like a, you know, an IOU for that. And then there are other expenses, like to the, the T-shirts and everything else that's been done, and I believe that, and again, I don't have itemized numbers, but my understanding is that that $250 covers all of the pre-work that the travel agent has been doing for the last year, so it's paying her, she's been coordinating this since last May, as well as any minor penalties and losses that she's gonna get hit with, which I don't have an itemized number.
Does anyone else have any questions?
No.
No.
Wendy, you have to take a vote, you have to take a motion.
Motion to cancel the DC trip.
Could I, could I make a request? This is, this is Wendy Bertrand.
Okay.
That somehow we're, there is, able to get the most concise information and able to lay it out to parents in a letter, because just, I think Chairperson Shroka had a good point, in that that's a large chunk of money for parents to lose, and, and I think overall, looking at the pandemic situation and seeing so many different vendors be flexible and, and, you know, not charge penalties, it would just be great to be able to give the most, the largest amount of information to parents so that the understanding is clear. And maybe people are fine, they may be fine about the loss of the deposit and say, hey, you know what, that's how it goes. But since we're looking at a cancellation versus a schedule.
The only other, yeah. I, I think, I agree, Wendy, I think that it needs to be laid out. I think also, I did, I thought I asked for some stuff to be presented with this. You know, she's a travel agent, what is her exact fee when you sign her contract with her? What is the percentage that she gets of the entire? I know that they work on, they get fees, so I was just wondering what her fee was when we used her, because I think that parents will be wondering that going forward, maybe we need to find a travel agency that does have trip insurance for the possibility of this happening again in the future, because this is a very unusual, it's just unusual times for everyone. So, and crediting and rescheduling, it's hard, it's hard for everybody, and it is gonna be hard for some people to swallow the $250. Just in general, they're low income, you know, I just think that some people are not gonna be happy if we don't have a really good reasoning behind the $250. People have been asking about the trip and how they're gonna get their money back already, so I'm just, I, I just think we need to have a really well-written answer for them when we send this email out that says it was canceled. And that money, where, where that money, the $250 from all of these people is going. I think that people will be asking that question.
This is, this is Jim. Heather, I agree with you, people are gonna ask the question, but that's not really our, our answer to give. We had, the parent signed a contract for $250 non-refundal. Unfortunately, that's, that's the way it is. I don't know how we can answer that question for the travel agent or anybody else. We can ask them for that information, but I don't know how we can provide that as an answer for, as the, as the school committee or as the school.
Oh, we can ask it from the travel agent and include it in the, in the information that goes home to the families about DC. That's all I, that's not for us, for, that, just for the families that are going, that are gonna get the email, yeah. That's...
Yeah, if we can get an answer, we can certainly ask.
Yeah.
But what's gonna happen is that we're gonna take a vote tonight, it will hit social media within two, three minutes of the vote, well before anybody has a chance to write a letter.
Right.
Or to get that answer from the travel agent. So while I agree, it would be nice to have that information, I don't know that we can delay a vote to provide that information.
Oh, no, no, I don't think we should delay. Oh, no, that's not, I don't think Wendy was suggesting that.
No, I'm not suggesting delaying the vote, it was a request. It was a request so that when written information is sent to families, the, they have all the relevant figures that we can give them as to how and why.
That backs up why they're not getting the...
Right, yes, right. So that they're not, they're not going back and asking questions, like, what will happen if we don't send out all this information that Mr. Santry is probably gonna get a whole bunch of emails asking the same question? So it'd be good to have the answer to go along with the announcement, just to avoid that.
Not rescheduling.
Don't know about the timing of getting that.
Right, that's, yeah. So, no, Wendy, and I don't, I don't think Wendy was suggesting we...
No, I was not.
Oh, no, she just wants to have...
No, not delaying a vote, just, just giving as much information and for families to know that, that the school, you know, did everything in their power to gain as much information and advocate for, you know, as much of a refund as possible.
And I don't think it's inappropriate to ask for an accurate accounting of where that money's going. And I don't think anyone wants anyone to work for free, but we also don't want anyone, we don't want anyone profiting from a situation like this too. We kind of just want to, you know, have a net zero outcome where people just get the money back that they put in. And I understand the $250 non-negotiable or non-refundable, but like we've all said, this is unprecedented time. So I think asking for that information is totally reasonable.
Okay. So now Wendy, you can take your vote.
All right, I'm looking, so...
I'll make a motion, Brian Leighton. I'll make a motion to cancel the DC trip.
This is Carol Ashambo. I will second that.
We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Levesque?
Unfortunately, the "i" is appropriate.
Mrs. Bertrand?
Aye.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Okay. Wendy, thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much for having that information.
Thank you, Mr. Santri.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you. Yes. Thanks for your efforts.
Thank you.
Okay. Now to the remote learning updates. I don't know how you're going to start. I'll give it to you, Dr. Burnham.
Okay, so let me take a moment to unmute.
Do we need to talk about any of the other field trips, or is that the only one?
Well, do we need to talk about?
We can talk about it, yep.
Galapagos, yeah. I always think of that as a summer field trip, sorry. There's Dawn. She needs to be unmuted.
There she goes.
Okay, Dawn.
Hi, thank you for having me. Dawn Garen here with the Galapagos trip that was supposed to go out in June of 2020. You know, it was great a month ago, and I had all the time in the world to just wait and see what's going to happen, but nothing's really changed. So I did reach out to my parents this week, and as much as they do regret the decision, they understand that it most likely is going to just have to be rescheduled to next spring. I would leave it to spring. I would like to leave it to spring at this point because depending on if my seniors are going to go or not, which they'll be freshmen in college at that point, I'd like to possibly have some flexibility of whether we go April or June. So I do have one of my seniors that are backing out, so I'm not sure if the other one's going to come with us or not. And so if she's going to come with us, I definitely want to stay in June. But if she's not, I'd like to possibly investigate the opportunity to change it to an April vacation trip. One step at a time.
Okay. So yours is a reschedule, though. It's not a cancellation.
Correct. They are, they would rather have it rescheduled than ever have it canceled. They don't want to lose a cent, and they, most of the kids are freshmen and sophomores now, so they'll, you know, they'll be ready to go by next June for sure.
Okay, and it's still Galapagos. You don't need to change it, correct?
Correct.
No change? Okay.
I'm just, I think at this point I'm requesting to, because we are getting close enough now to make this decision. I have to let them, I have to let the EF company know by May 5th, I believe, and then we don't have another school committee meeting, or you don't have another school committee meeting before that. So I think at this point, we need a decision to choose to reschedule it.
Okay, so I need a motion to reschedule the Galapagos trip to next June and perhaps April if none of the seniors, this year's seniors go. You would prefer April? Okay.
Possibly. I need to investigate that.
Possibly.
I can make a motion.
Oh, who is making a motion?
I think it's me. This is Carol Ashambo, and I will make a motion to reschedule the Galapagos trip to next April or June, whatever seems best, as we get closer to that time.
Yeah, this Jim Levesque will second.
Okay, we need a roll, all in favor, roll call vote?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Mr. Levesque?
Aye.
And Mrs. Soroka?
Yes. Okay, thank you, Dawn.
Thank you.
Okay. But now back, note to the remote learning updates.
Well, I believe I'm muted. All of the administrators.
Okay. Heidi is not muted. I don't see Heidi unmuted.
That's on purpose.
Heidi doesn't want to talk?
How did I know Mr. Santri was going to have a comment about that?
There she is. All right, so I thought the most impactful way to explain to everybody what's happening, remote learning, what it, what it looks like and sounds like, really would be best coming from, from the principals in each of the schools and the assistant principals as well. And as part of the update, Mrs. Hanscom can also give you an update on, on some special ed elements as well. So which, which one of you would like to start? All right.
Christina, go ahead. Might as well go from the bottom.
Start with the primary school. So this is, we're going to share a screen, right, Mrs. Gerton?
Yep, but you got to disable, I don't know if I can, I'm trying, but it won't let me. You disabled me from sharing the screen, it says. Sorry.
That's on purpose, too.
Thanks, Tim. Nope, still not letting me.
It should be now.
All right, let me try. Hold on. Oh, we go back. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay. Okay, here we go. All right. So hello, oh, wait a minute, hold on. Let me see if it'll let me, I wanted to, I wanted to make it one big picture here, but it's not letting me do that. Oh, I don't want to share it. I want to present it. There we go.
Vote of you to present.
Yeah, I got it. Okay, so hello, everyone. Thank you so much for, I hope you can see it. You might have to move yourself around a little bit. We're calling it the day in life in our homes for the remote learning. So our first, the first thing I want to show you is that we're doing morning announcements. Not only are the teachers doing them in their classrooms, we're doing them. I'm not going to give you my whole five minutes, but I will kind of show you. You get sick of listening to yourself after a while. This took me two hours, only because I had to make a board and it was, it was just a few things. I'll give you like a minute of it.
Your audio isn't coming through, Christina.
I know, I don't know why. Hold on. Oh, we go back. How come the audio is not working? That's what I don't understand.
So if you unshare and then go back in and share, it'll have an audio button on the bottom and it says share audio, and you have to click on that.
The audio button, where?
Annika, you want to step in?
It's, oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Oh, under speaker? Click the green share, and then when you get the blue share icon underneath that, you'll see sound share. It says share computer sound. Got it. Look at that. Okay, I'm back.
Now Mr. Santri can hear all the learning that's happening.
Good morning, everyone. Here we are today, first week of our full week of remote learning. We're going to start today out by saying the pledge. We're going to get to do these morning announcements a couple times a week. So here we go. Let's put our right hand on our heart. We're going to face the flag, and we're going to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now we're going to sing our patriotic song today.
So I won't bore you with all of that, but this is Kevin. And the day that I did this, Kevin's mother sent a picture of me actually doing this, so it was really cute. All right, moving on. These are preschools. Did everybody hear everything that we just did?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so these are the preschool, this is the preschool, and they have been on scavenger hunts, and they're doing some writing and labeling and some math. And this little guy is making a butterfly. Can you see the butterfly with his snack? So that was a pre-K. The kindergarten, oh my, look at them, they are writing and making pictures and telling us that he has a bunk bed and he has a Harry Potter sheet, just in case you want to know what his bed looks like. And these little guys picked, listening to their teacher's read-aloud recording for their bedtime story, instead of having mom read them a story. This is first grade, getting it done. They're doing a lot of writing, some organizing, some math. Very excited about all their work in first grade. Second grade is doing a lot of writing and some math, and I'll show you a few, on a couple slides later, some of the math that they're doing. They're making a book in this picture in the middle, and then some of the work they're doing is really based around, you know, writing to mom, writing to people in the home, and he's telling you a little bit about his book and what happened. Have, this is really cute. Some of the music people, I mean, in the music class, the music teacher taught them a game. What I love about this is then he even got to play it online with another student. So it was really, it was really fun. And then some art projects, and I'll give you a little blurb of this. This is cute. So that's cute. This is great. I'm going to give you just a blurb of this, but this was so funny. The first grade team got together and talked about making math toolkits, like boxes at home, so that they could use that for their math. So I'll give you like a minute of this, but it's really cute.
Hi, boys and girls. This is your first grade team coming to you live from home. Say hi, everybody.
Hi.
Today, we're going to build a math toolkit, and you can use whatever you can find at your home. I'm using a cardboard box that I found.
I'm going to use a gift bag to hold all my math tools.
I'm going to use a shoebox to hold my tools.
Basket works great for your math tools.
I found a bowl that I can put mine in.
I'm going to use to put mine in.
I'm going to use a Ziploc bag.
You're going to want to add counters to your math toolkit. I'm going to use macaronis for my counters, and I'm going to collect 20.
So as you can see, they find different things throughout the house, and then all of the kids are putting little math tool bags together to use for their math classes. All of, this is a lot of teaching. A couple that were amazing is this picture over here to the right has got, this is Rafielli, and she is, oh my God, she is doing, she took her whole wall in her house, I'll show you quickly, and made it her classroom.
Hello, K6. I thought it would be really fun for us to try a virtual morning meeting and do some of our math jobs. So if you look behind me, I have a message, and I have a calendar that I made, and a spot for us to record some tally charts, the weather, the temperature, and here's our weather graph from school. I started filling it in from last week. We should start with...
This next one is just a math lesson, all remote teaching, right, right through...
Hi, friends. Today, we are going to be talking about creating a tally chart, bar graph, pictograph, and line plot. You're going to want to put your name down in this box down here, just like I have already done. Our data today is going to be looking at favorite food. I asked students what their favorite food was, and here are their results. You might want to take a piece of paper right now and write down these numbers. Pizza, nine books.
So, and so there's a lot, in the next page, many, there's a parent doing some lessons. There's a second grade teacher. In this one right here, Mrs. Savell actually used her daughter in it, where she was reading a story, and I'm going to show you how she implemented that into a full PowerPoint a little later. And over here, we've got Mrs. Lavalley doing a full lesson on ones and tens. Next is, is the best part, and these are the kids. I'm going to let you hear a couple of these because they are absolutely priceless, and their parents were, were working so hard. So I'll go through a few of them, maybe like three or four of them. So let me just start with, this is a first grader.
Hi, Mrs. Lavalley. This is my monster. We're making a vampire. It's really scary. Me and my dad made it.
Hi, Mrs. Chat. Here are the questions. Here are the, um... So, um, the wax is on-toxic. The crayons are mostly done by machines, and, um... They glue the rubber before they put it on the crayon. Hi, Mrs. Chat.
One more. My favorite part was in the book, that when the bear gave, the stinky bear gave the bunny a hug, and when they shared the water at the end.
A lot of the families have sent us, you know, just like, thank you so much, and, you know, really great comments about some of our teachers, saying how supportive they are and engaging. I love the one, thank you so much for a great week of learning and keeping a nice balance of activities. We had a really good balance of work between online and offline activities. It has been a manageable amount of work in that it is not too hard, but also keeps Ashley nice and busy. The ones down the bottom with the thank you so much and, oh, God, very helpful, we had sent them out, the Google classrooms and how to get on and what to do. This is very, very, very new for the primary, teaching this way, and for parents on the other end to learn how to manage all of the Google classrooms and how to get in all of them. So it was great to get the feedback, to know that they were getting on and they were really enjoying what they were doing. We did some resources for families. You know, this is one that I had shown you when Karen was on, Mrs. Savell, and her, she does a whole PowerPoint on kindness. So even all of the people that are, that are those, I call those real amazing bookends, all those extras that help all of our students, she did a beautiful, you know, blurb in here, used her daughter and a story to talk about kindness, and she's done about, probably about four or five of these videos. So they're really good. And the last thing that we had was from Mrs. Gothier, who has been really helpful in the means of technology for everyone. This is a Google Doc that I shared with all of the parents and families, and this way they could go right in, and this was the one that was, oh, gosh, that was so helpful. Thank you very much, where they could actually go in and learn on how to get on to Google and what to do and what they needed to do. So that was some great stuff that, that we were able to do, and kids are having a great time. And I was really, I'm really excited about all the learning and all the hard work our teachers have done and our parents, and I can't say enough. So I don't know if anyone has any questions about anything. I'd love to answer them.
I can't see any, okay. Does anyone have questions? Committee, any questions for Mrs. Gerton?
No question. This is Jim Levesque. No question, really. It's just, I'm, I'm very impressed by what I just saw, and how quickly, you know, as you said, this is really new to the primary school. And everybody stepped up, and it was, it was really neat to see the kids and interacting with the, with the teachers that way. So thank you.
You're welcome. And the one with the little boy and... You're welcome. And the one with the little boy and he, what he was talking about and saying how he was like, they miss us. It's just hard. For me, I watch these and I get so teared up because I know how much they miss us and we miss them. And it's, it's so hard. But we're making it so that we're in their homes and we're there. And I think they feel a lot better this last, you know, seven days. So really excited. And Carol, I'm sorry, I think you had something.
I was just blaming the dust in my house.
Oh, okay.
Um, I just wanted, I was going to say something similar to what Jim said. It's very overwhelming for teachers to be able to figure out all this technology. And very overwhelming for parents to figure out how to integrate this technology into their day. And it looks like you've done it in a way that isn't too overwhelming for the parents to figure out. Because I know it's, I have grandchildren that are this age and it's very difficult. Just to keep the login straight, it's huge. So, looks like a very good job is being done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all my staff too. Thank you.
Hi, Leighton. I want to thank you for the presentation. I thought that was great. I love the coordination of the first grade team. Definitely looked like they were practicing that and got that down. I was wondering, Christina, if you could speak a little bit about the team collaboration and meeting while they're not teaching?
So it's funny you say that. We have a lot of Zoom meetings. The grade levels meet every week and sometimes they meet even more. Together, they make these kinds of videos to send off to families. They also do different, you know, they'll take turns on things. Some will do a math, some will do a read aloud, some will do a science. So they're kind of breaking that up. The special ed teachers are involved. They all have their own classrooms and they're also aiding these children as needed and helping families. We meet as a staff once a week. And there's still like our Desi Grant meeting, the writing meeting, writing grant that we have with the state. We're still meeting on that. So like, I have a schedule of meetings daily that many teachers are in. They also have to do a lot of planning and they, I can't believe how long it takes. Like you forget, it's almost like that first year teaching. You have to go all the way back to the beginning and start like slowly, how am I going to roll this out? How am I going to get to the end? What do I need to do to get there? So I think it's a lot of collaborating. And I can say that the staff, to me, has really gelled and they are so willing to help each other. Where I'm even on at seven o'clock at night with some of them because I'm trying to find things and do things myself. And I'll say, how do I find that? So I get people to Zoom with me, we go on together and we split screens and we ask questions. So I think that it's showing a lot of teamwork, which is really amazing. And we've built more than community, I feel, in a faraway, you know, distance. So I can say that there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes, I'd say. Yeah.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Wendy, you're on mute.
Unmute Wendy.
Yeah, there you go.
So one thing I wanted to point out is a little bit unique to the primary school and to complement the flexibility that seems to be happening there. Because students at the primary need some adult assistance, you know, accessing their work and just even to get, you know, to get on to their devices. Whereas, you know, elementary age and above, many of them, you know, can do that already. I'm sure some students at Turkey Hill still need some help, but they're just a little, a little more independent. And I know that some of the Zoom meetings at the primary have taken place at different times, say in the evening, to accommodate, to help support families who themselves are working during the day, parents and caregivers, so that they can help their children, you know, access their learning. So, you know, that's another level of flexibility and commitment that's, that the primary school has had to put in as well. So incredibly well done.
Yeah, very impressive, very impressive. A lot. And since you, they are all going back to the basics of first year teaching, redoing plans. This is amazing. It's amazing. It's good work. Good job. So, are we going to move to the next level? Is that Turkey Hill then?
That's Turkey Hill. I'm ready to go.
Heidi.
All right, let me try to share my screen with you. And start my slideshow. There we go. All right, so remote learning at Turkey Hill Elementary School, the new normal. You know, we've had seven full days of it. And I would say, as you've already mentioned, that the elementary school was a little bit better prepared. In terms of many teachers did have Google classrooms. There were a couple who didn't. So that wasn't a huge shift. But moving everything to a remote learning platform is really a remarkable amount of work and teachers have done a pretty good job. So what I did is I just kind of dipped into different classrooms to show you some different things. So I'm going to start with myself because I do morning announcements every day. And I had to think about if there was some way that I could connect with kids on a daily basis. So I start with a little morning announcement. I'll just give you a quick clip. Good morning, Turkey Hill Elementary School students and staff. Today is Wednesday, April 8th, and welcome to remote learning. So I, you know, mine's just a little two-minute video. It takes me about four tries to get it even remotely correct until I don't care anymore and then I just do it. I include a couple of things that I'm, that I'm hoping will, will draw kids in. So I do a joke of the day. I was going to do one for you, but Mr. Santri strongly suggested that I not. So I'm not going to do my joke. I also have a word of the day and the kids, I give the word and the definition and they, they make a sentence for me about it. And then we do birthday shout-outs, including this week, the birthdays that, that we missed last month, right? So we're trying to cover those as well. So this is a little note that I got today regarding the word of the day from one of my friends. The word was delicate and I just, his picture, I, how could I not include that? It was awesome. I was so pleased to get that from him. We, you know, the Google meets is the new forum. And in one of our classrooms, the teachers actually set up a how-to for this. So I'll just show you a few seconds.
Morning, boys and girls. Mrs. Margaret and I just wanted to make a quick video to show you some how-tos for Google meets. We know that we ran into some issues earlier this week, so we just wanted to make sure you knew how to use all the different features. So when you first enter into your meeting, you're going to make sure that you meet yourself, as we have said before.
All right, so just like all of you getting used to the Zoom platform, we're all getting used to the Google meets. And so I thought it was particularly helpful that the teachers were willing to do a how-to video for kids about that. So this is an example of an ELA grade five assignment from Mrs. Connery. Pretend your main character's entire life is burned up, turned upside down. Obviously, we don't have to pretend too much. So suddenly, one day, a pandemic hit and you're no longer allowed to go to school. Write a narrative about what this person's life is suddenly like. And that might seem like a pretty obvious prompt, but what I wanted to show you is, you know, she's all about it, right? So she does like, I think it's a 30-minute lesson. And so I'm just going to give you a real quick clip from that. Whoa, wait a second. Try it again.
Remember, your characters and what they face, the problems are going to end up later on becoming those themes. What lesson did that person learn? And what in the story happened to make them change? That's what you need to be thinking of when you're writing these.
So you can see, a lot of teachers brought their whiteboards home, very seriously laying out all of the elements of their lessons and learning to record themselves for students. Parent feedback, we've gotten quite a bit, actually, considering we've only been at it seven days. And very positive, the parents are all in, right? They recognize what a, what a shift in growth this is for all of us. And they're doing their very best to participate. This is, you know, that's the other part of it is how kids submit their work. So via, via different apps or photos or Google Docs, they're chiming in with their stuff. That's an art project. Here's a quick real-world application from.
Looking at this picture, I thought, wow, what a perfect figure for us to practice using addition to find total volume. Because our school, Turkey Hill Elementary School, is made up of a bunch of rectangular prisms. First, we've got this rectangular prism over here. This is your cafeteria over.
So, you know, just trying to, I think teachers are working hard to think outside of the box and find things familiar and, and engage children with math. Some more shout-outs from parents. This one I had to share because it just made me laugh. Ms. Latandre was trying so hard, you know, she wanted to do this very cool thing. And it was, it was a project, an app called Freckle. And if you look at the end, it's, it's really simple, right? Remember when it prompts, you have to enter your name, it's first name, last initial. So seems straight up. But here's the stream of student responses. I don't think I can do Freckle. What's the code? Freckle does not like my name. Just first name, last initial. Okay, I understand that. I can't get on Freckle. Are you sure I have an account? I can't get on Freckle. Mrs. Toney, do you just watch the videos? Is there a she for that? This is my last name is spelled incorrectly, even though I spelled it right. I don't know what happened. It's your first name, last initial. Like, I just, I thought that was great, right, to just demonstrate for you. Because teachers have been commenting on this, like, holy smokes, the stream of comments that we get from kids. Same questions over and over again. So wanted to show you that. This was a little video that actually, one of the parents, Mrs. Henry did for the Achieve students. I'll show you a quick few, did it again, get back to it, a quick few seconds.
So I just wanted to give you guys an update today and show you how much bigger the caterpillars have gotten.
So in, you know, they're trying to have this project and share with the students on a weekly basis or every few days, checking in about the caterpillars and, and what they're doing. Third graders, obviously, the very first thing they need to do is just learn how to check in. So your name and your homeroom number and, and checking in, how are you feeling today? And the teachers are trying to get them to do that in a consistent way. And again, here's third grade comments over a math paper. Number three, six, and 10 were a bit tricky. Number three and four were hard for me. I got most of it right. I got most of it right. I got almost all right. I said hexagon instead of pentagon. Good job, good job. So both the teachers, regular and special ed, and jumping in. I learned not to measure on a screen because I got the measuring parts wrong. Mistake to learn from. Sort of that third grade stream of consciousness happening there. Some more lovely parent feedback. This is from different grades. PE class, she's having them keep logs, give them all sorts of choices about what they can do. And, oh, I had to show you this because it's fun. This is a kid who submitted their feedback. After the meeting, you guys can all go home and try this. A handstand challenge.
Oh, my.
You can push something on TikTok, yep.
Wow.
Just a clip from Mr. Blankenship's music lessons for the week. You can see he embeds all sorts of videos in there. And again, student work submission. One student was inspired to give a whole little slideshow about the saxophone because that was what the music work was about. And I'm just going to finish up with a quick clip of Mr. Smith.
Ronald said Elizabeth, your clothes are really pretty. Your hair is very neat. You look like a real prince, but you are a bum. They didn't get married after. So that's the end of the paperback princess. So I'm thinking maybe a feed presented itself here.
So he's talking about theme. He did a read aloud, read the whole story out loud, had quite a conversation with the students about that. Okay, so that is the end of my presentation. This is Santri. I think I went a little longer than seven minutes. I apologize. Are there any questions for me?
I just have the same comment as I had with Mrs. Gerton. It's heartening and very impressive.
Thank you. On behalf of the team, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions, comments for Heidi? That was amazing, Heidi.
Wendy needs to be muted, unmuted. Thank you.
I just want to be muted all the time.
My dogs bark a lot.
Oh, that's why.
So, um, Mrs. Champagne, are you finding, is there, was there a huge difference between grade three and grade five? Or how is grade three accessing everything? Are some of, is there some independent work? Can they be mostly independent? It's just, those are, that's a big leap there between grades three and five in their, I would think, in their ability to work independently.
Yes, exactly. And, and grade five certainly had more familiarity with Google Classroom. And there were, you know, a few teams that were using it quite consistently. In grade three, they'd all been introduced to it, thank God. But, but it's the consistency of getting them to go on every day and to, you know, sign in and it, and their name and then to access the work. That is a much steeper learning curve. And I know the third grade teachers are working very closely together to make sure that they're all giving out the same expectations and instructions and lessons and, and really combine online and offline learning for those kids so that it's not overwhelming, especially for parents.
Thank you. Well, well done. Well done.
Thank you.
Brian, do you have any comments or questions?
I just have.
Okay, Carol.
Okay, I just have the same comment that, you know, a lot has been accomplished in a very small amount of time. And we can tell everybody's working really hard and doing a really good job.
I'm sure they'll, they'll really appreciate hearing that. Thank you.
Brian, did you have?
No, great job. Thank you.
So Mr. Santri's up next, correct?
Yes.
We're going to tie it to seven minutes. I didn't know it was seven minutes.
It's, yeah, we kind of joked about that. So, Ms. Champagne, I've said this before, I'll say it again, you are a tough act to follow. That was a great presentation. Thank you. So, remote learning at LMHS, I just wanted to kind of preface this with just some information once. I'd like to thank my administrative team through this last three and a half weeks. What an unbelievable crew of people to work with, just to collaborate and throw ideas around and to work together. Just an amazing group of people, whether it's 7:00 AM pounding out an email or whether it's 9:30 at night in front of the computer, always willing to help and get the information out there to put students first. I'd also like to thank our faculty who absolutely have taken a platform that did not exist three and a half weeks ago and create such a quality product that I'm going to give you a little bit of a snapshot here to take a look at. It is incredible, the work that they've put in. I just would like to give them thanks for that. Just to give you a little background about our remote learning platform, we have 80 Google classrooms at the middle school, serving sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Our participation rate for the first week and one day is hovering around 90%, which is a very strong number if you think about this remote learning platform just coming into fruition with the help of our administrators and our teachers who have come up with a procedure and a process for reaching out to those families that have not engaged in learning and a process for that in order to get those kids up and learning. So just wanted to give you that little bit of background. So as Ms. Champagne did, we tried to create a sense of normalcy with, you know, I come on every morning and do the morning announcements. In anticipation of my colleagues going long, I've kept all of our clips to about 10 seconds just to give you a snapshot of how, how teachers are interacting and using this platform and how the different variety of ways that teachers are reaching out to students. It's truly amazing. It's truly amazing. So just really quick for this. So, uh, I heard the camera adds 10 pounds, but I really think that, uh, working from home adds 10 pounds at least. So that is going to be my goal for the spring is to take that down a little bit. But then we have different grade levels that have created different student schedules, not in order for them to adhere to it perfectly, because we know they might not have access to a Chromebook at different times during the day, but more to let them know when a teacher is posting an assignment and when you're having additional extra help available. And when are our live meets? And when can I join on those? And when can I do the question of the day? And different things like that, just in order to help structure the day for students. And this is just an idea of our eighth grade remote learning schedule. So I, I think as I go into this next slide, it's going to immediately play. So I just want to give you a heads up. This is our science, sixth grade science, Mrs. Clark. She is using the model of, um, of the Google Classroom as she is the facilitator on the side, providing directions and instruction for the sheet of, or the body of work that the students are seeing at home. So I'm just going to click on that. Oh, it didn't go immediately.
I think you got to share with audio, Tim.
Yeah, and you're not in presentation mode either, so that might be why it didn't play.
Yeah.
Hold on. What, do I have to go out, stop share?
Yeah, you got to stop and then come back in with share with audio.
I wanted to say about the Moon Phase journals is I've really been enjoying all of your comments and your photos. They're great. Um, if you could write in your name.
Is that working or not?
It is.
Yeah.
We'll get full screen again.
I wanted to say about the Moon Phase journals is I've really been enjoying all of your comments and your photos. They're great. Um, if you could write in your name, um.
So as you can see, this teacher is sequentially going through aspects of her instruction as it's happening on the screen for students. And if they can't do it live, it's been recorded and then they can go back to it at a different time. So this is another.
And for people that really want to do some project based learning, um, you can build your own mini greenhouse with recycled materials around the house. And there's a lot of different options for how.
Uh, that's Will Guerra, our eighth grade science teacher, who has some great YouTube videos that we're hoping, uh, we're going to be able to showcase some of those, possibly on public access as we move forward to let the community know just exactly what level of instruction that students are getting. So this is another way in which teachers are, um, communicating with students or where they'll, they'll pre-record a video in which they can watch at a time where they feel is convenient. And then they go over to the platform, which in this case is a flipgrid, which they can record themselves in a private classroom piece and then submit that into the teacher and then the teacher can provide feedback on that. This is. So this is also, this is a document camera at home that a teacher is using after she has already recorded her instruction as they're going through a literary analysis of Langston Hughes. Uh, this teacher also provides, um, Viola Davis does a reading of this poem. So you can click on the reading of the poem. You can go through with Mrs. Whitaker through the literary analysis and see exactly how they are kind of dissecting this poem.
Now, bright still, eyes still climbing, and life for me ain't been no crystal stair.
This is another mode of communication where one of our English teachers just presents a poem and then asks for feedback from the class in order to, they are providing what their reaction to the poem is. And some pretty strong reactions and great, you know, one of our things was Socratic method at the middle school where kids are able to provide what they felt, what their reaction was to the poem. So look at the different modes in the first three and a half weeks of how we're reaching out to different students at different times. Truly amazing. Whoops.
Folded as well. So I know.
Did I skip a, a slide?
I think you did, Tim.
Down 10, over, right 3. Look at that, there's my answer.
Coordinate graphing at the eighth grade, step by step sequential process for students to follow.
As well.
Once again, they can do.
I know that it was down 10, over, right 3. Look at that, there's my answer.
And I know you can't see it, but that's Amy over here on the side, providing the instruction of right along with doing the problem. I don't know how I can go back. Was it right click back?
Your arrow keys.
Folded as well.
Yeah, I'm skipping it. This is, um, Ms. Antea at the seventh grade that does app mini lessons that coincide with some of the, um, lessons that she does in class. Let me just give you a little bit of taste.
Hi, everybody, and welcome to my mini lesson on finding the area and perimeter of semicircles. Um, currently it's hailing outside and very windy, so that's not too exciting, but it makes for a perfect time to do some math inside.
Once again, this is kind of the true Google Classroom of first citizenship. And I believe this is eighth grade civics, our new, our new curriculum. Oh, no, what is this?
One, one piece is eighth grade, uh, the civic site, an example of a slideshow. And the other is sixth grade social studies, a Google form.
And I know our sixth grade teachers or one of our sixth grade teams is doing morning check ins with each student by classroom. So, uh, I mean, by homeroom. So 9:30 is one homeroom check in with all students, not mandatory, but if they'd like to go in and check in and see their teacher. I know that all teachers are doing a question of the day and it's kind of our way to track attendance. How are you feeling? What emoji describes how you're feeling? What's your favorite food? Just something to engage them to see if they're coming on and completing those assignments. So even our special areas with music, we're able to, you know, read music. And, uh, Mr. Sheldon is providing some, uh, quality instruction through our Google Classroom platform. This is something our guidance counselor has created, which I think is wonderful. And this was really, uh, on the go from, uh, close to our enrichment work, which is a Google Classroom for each grade level, where our guidance counselors can check in with each and every student on the grade level. And actually, we've identified some kids that have been anxious or, you know, having a difficult time with disclosure, when we're able to provide them a little extra comfort or a little extra, um, I don't want to say therapy, but just an adult to be able to talk to. Um, and it's been a great screening tool. Karma and Cheryl have just done an outstanding job in making sure that they're reaching out to all those kids. Here's our PE class, and I know Mrs. Theria and Mrs. Rios have actually done a live yoga class for students and they're continuing to look at different opportunities to get that physical fitness in during our remote learning. Seventh grade art, Mrs. Warren has done, she has created an art studio where kids can upload their art projects so that they can be viewed. And this is probably one of the funnest ones. We had Spirit Week, so through Padlet on, um, the Google Classroom's grade level that Karma created, we can go on and kids can upload different things. I think this was what are you great at? We had one was Lunenburg Pride. Today was what you wonder about. So kids can go on there and post what they're doing. It's, uh, different sixth, seventh, and eighth grades. Here's some of that community feedback that we've gotten. I've been principal now for 10 years. Just a wonderful feeling, uh, to get the level of positive feedback we've had around this program and, and it just the sense of community that I feel from our parents, um, of the middle school or just what, uh, they understand what the process these teachers and we have gone, I've gone through. So this is just a sampling of some of those things that we have, uh, received. So that's my presentation. I feel free to answer any questions or concerns that you had.
Um, does anyone have any questions or concerns? I think we need to exit out of here. I can't see anyone. Carol.
I can see you.
Yeah. I know, I can see Carol now.
Oh, well, I'm there. Um, um, I'll make my comment. Um, that's very impressive with all the different types of activities that are there so that any child with any specific learning strength, um, can latch on to something. I also like the schedule because I think that some kids really need to look at something to give them that kind of direction. Very nicely done.
Thank you.
And this is Jim, I like the daily check in as well, kind of just to see how people are, how the kids are doing. Um, and it's interesting to see the progression of what's happening between primary school, at least up right now through the middle school and how the sophistication of the, and use of the tools is used to enhance the, the learning experience. So really very eye opening.
Thank you. And I, I, I think because when we transitioned to our new school building in 2016, we, the, the technology that was readily available to us, that we started our training back then. So we're in a much better position in order to kind of, you know, roll this out with our remote learning. Our teachers are, you know, was talking to Mr. McGrath and Mrs. Scott. Around 95% of them were familiar with Google Classroom as a platform. So we're just continuing to build on that.
Great job.
Yeah.
Now, I'm, I, I think Mr. McGrath is experiencing some audio difficulty. Mr. McGrath, are you there?
Yes, I am here. Can you hear me? Thank you.
I'm stepping back.
I've done everything I could to test my, uh, computer. I, I don't know why it wasn't working, but it's working now, so I'm thrilled.
Mrs. Scott and I were willing to jump in and, and do the PowerPoint, but we're good.
I know you, I know you would be, so thank you. That's, I have great colleagues. So, um, I do want to kind of echo what Tim said about working collaboratively with Dr. Burnham and the, and the rest of the admin team and also my staff. It's, it's been great and we've, um, whatever needs to be done. And we've always kind of looked at that, you know, what's, what's in the best interest of kids? Do we need to talk at seven at night? Do we need to wake up at, you know, six in the, whatever we need to do. So, um, one thing I would say to start, I'm, I'm very proud of my staff at how much, um, they've kind of dived into this remote learning. Um, as, as Tim said earlier, the high school was very familiar with Google Classroom because we were all one to one. But the amount of professional development that has gone on, uh, with my staff of just searching out things. I don't know how to do this and colleagues. One silver lining I can say from kind of this isolation, it's kind of ironic to say, is that we've actually had more collaboration, I feel, with my departments and staff, just sharing of, um, best practices and reaching out. And we, we talked about that. My department heads have been fantastic through this because we've talked about, you know, God forbid, one of my staff gets sick. So working collaboratively for those co-talk classes, all my English 1, all my Algebra 1, all my Algebra 2s, um, because if someone was to get sick, we would need someone to step in because those, those students still have to be taught. So the collaboration has really been, um, you know, been wonderful. And, um, you know, the, the professional development that as a district, um, we've kind of put together has been great. And just the PD that, that the staff has kind of sought out on their own. Um, there have been so many Zooms and so many just department meetings where, hey, I, I found this out last night. We need to talk. And so, um, you know, just, uh, constant phone calls at night with staff and how can we do this? How can we solve this problem? Um, I had one staff member make a comment to me like solving a, you know, a physics equation on the board, which would have taken five to 10 minutes to show the kids. It was almost an hour and change of how to upload what he was doing to show the kids a step by step process on how to solve the equation. So, uh, just a lot of different things that my staff has had to overcome. And I'm going to show you some snapshots, just like everyone else. And Tim and I and, and Mrs. Scott, I have to thank Mrs. Scott for, you know, all the help with putting this presentation together. So we kind of worked on this as an LMHS group. So I'm going to be asking Tim to kind of, instead of him unsharing and then me sharing. Now my slide's going to kind of just, I'm going to jump in right, right from here. So if you want to click over, Tim, that would be great. So this is a, an English assignment. Um, it's kind of overcoming adversity and students are engaging with topics of storytelling and how storytelling can be used to overcome, um, difficult times. So kind of, as you can see, there's a little bit of a theme of a lot of teachers, kind of using this time to, to get thoughts from kids, um, on what's going on. If you want to click over to the next slide, Tim. Um, this one was kind of creative. It's, it's around redesigning and structuring schools. So obviously we've kind of had to redesign school in the past, you know, two and a half weeks where we are going to a completely new platform. So it's, it's another way of thinking, you know, how was school when it was under quote unquote, "normal circumstances"? And this is an activity where students can kind of write about, um, how they can, um, design school and what problems they saw with school. You can click to the next slide, please.
Happy Monday, English 9, beginning of week two of remote learning.
And you can kind of see here, which is the side by side, you know, instruction that, um, you've seen a lot of where, you know, and my clips are very short, but very similar, kind of going through. And this is kind of the layout for, uh, week one. And if you go through, it kind of tells you exactly what the expectation is going to be for the week. Um, and then there will be daily check ins to see if there are any questions. And you can see all the different platforms that are linked below and all the different types of, um, learning platforms that are, that are being used along with the rubric and the expectations for the work. So, you know, this is in general what you're going to see from a lot of the, the teachers and, and the lessons. So kids know right from the beginning, this is the expectation for the week. And then there are also going to be daily check ins, uh, because the biggest fear is you just get inundated with emails. Um, so if you have one spot, you know, one pretty much slide that you can look at to say, here's the expectations for the week, then with the follow up questions, it helps the students get organized. And Mrs. Callahan actually sent out, um, kind of a student planner, um, to help with students to try to organize, um, themselves, because it is, it is difficult, um, you know, when, when things can just kind of get lost. So it's like a daily planner for students to use to help kind of organize what their classes are and what their lessons and what the expectations are for the week. Mrs. Santri, you can click. This was a lesson I liked. It's, it's linked to a YouTube video around the Great Depression. But what I really liked about this lesson, uh, this is a history lesson, um, that Ms. Martin put together. It's, it's a lesson about the Great Depression and it's set up in like a menu form. And it just gives students a lot of choice. And this is one way to get kids, um, you know, really involved in the lesson by giving them choice. So, you know, you don't see all of it, but all the different choices that they would have to pick from. Um, you know, this kind of allows students to own their own learning and have some say of what they kind of want to research. And then, uh, one thing that Mrs., uh, Ms. Martin was hoping to do with this particular activity is they would choose one of the three choices, um, and then they would do some primary and secondary, uh, source research. And hopefully, uh, when they did the writing, it might get them away from the computer a little bit. But I just, I really liked the choice, uh, aspect of this particular lesson. Uh, Mr. Santri, if you want to click over.
Buzz, the different elements within it. And I really want to have a discussion about the dropping of the atomic bombs so we may move forward. All right, now, um.
So, you know, you can see that when those particular, um, topics come up, like those really, um, you know, heavy topics, the teacher will want to have discussion points around, you know, viewpoints and what your thoughts are around that. And that was, I think, Tim clicked, but that, that the lesson was about that. And that was trying to engage the students with some of the questions on the side. Um, this is, um, one area I would like to talk about because this was an entirely new platform for the math department. We have used Khan Academy in the past, that is a platform we were used to. Um, we did not have iXL at the high school. Um, that was a program that I was very thankful that the, um, the iXL team, uh, worked with me on when I called and said, you know, I really need to have something to help hone the skills. Um, and they gave it to me at a really good price that we all agreed to, which was free. So. So that was really, really awesome of them. So I was so thankful and it's something, you know, it was, it was a good marketing tool from them because my math teachers do love it and they're using it to help kind of reinforce those skills that students need. And it's a program with algorithms built into it. The kids used it. They're familiar with it at the middle school. And the ironic thing with iXL is that the kids were pretty familiar with it because they used it at LMS. But the high school teachers weren't familiar with it. So they really felt like they had to play catch up. And there was some professional development that they had to do with a very quick turnaround to get familiar with this particular platform. And they did a great job and it's something they're using. And my, my department head is certainly pushing to try to see if I can work a way to get it next year. And I said, you know, I'll, we'll see and I'll try to budget for it, but we'll, we'll discuss that when the time comes. But there are some classes that we're looking at trying to help supplement for next year to maybe help with those math skills. Because with math, it is difficult when you don't have the face to face instruction. So we're trying to build something into next year's schedule to help students who might, you know, need some reinforcement of some of those basic math skills for, you know, those students who struggle in math and might need help with passing Algebra II and Precalc. So, but iXL is, is a program that we're very happy with. And we were very excited to be working with the company who ended up giving it to us for English and math, nine through 12 for free for the remainder of the year. So that was a really cool thing and very happy with iXL. Tim, you can click the next slide, please. So this is an example of a teacher's home kind of converted into a classroom. As you can see, the, the themes that have been going on throughout, you know, the teacher, I believe it was at the primary or elementary school who turned their wall into a classroom. Well, this is kind of a bedroom that is now being converted into, you know, the whiteboard and where all the Google meets are happening and kind of the day, the daily instruction that's going to be going on. So, you know, this, this is the amazing thing that teachers are doing. They've basically converted their classrooms, you know, into their home and they brought them into their home. And they're trying to connect with kids to the best of their ability, using document cameras and using, you know, you know, Padlet and all these different teaching platforms. So I just, I just want to say I am super proud of how hard staff have worked. And I can't tell you how many text messages and emails I've received at six, seven, eight o'clock at night. And there are times I just have to shut down because I need a break, you know, I just, you just, but you, you're doing it because you know you want to deliver a high quality curriculum. And it's just, you're, you're nervous because you're doing something that's never been done before. So you're just, you're always on and your brain is always going. And I'm sure some of my colleagues, you know, I'll wake up and I'll say, I got to do this or I, I thought of this. And so I'm just, I just wanted to show you kind of what some of the, some of the homes now look like. They're like remote teaching rooms. Tim, you can click the next slide, please. So this is getting into science and there are some really cool different things. Mrs. Byrie had her anatomy class use Play-Doh to build bones and hands and feet. Just some of the different differentiation and trying to get kids, you know, one of the themes with a lot of the teachers is that they're at the computer so long. So they're trying to come up with as many projects as they can do. So kids aren't staring at a computer. I know I've been getting a lot more headaches because I'm just on the computer all of the time with emails and Zooms. So a lot of teachers are trying to differentiate to the best of their ability and give as many different options for kids to learn. And, you know, get as many hands on activities as opposed to just, you know, punching away at the keyboard. Tim, you can, you can hit the next slide. Um, you know, another example, there's the, there's the Play-Doh activity that I had talked about. She also used Padlet to have kids collaborating with technology to set up, you know, different activities. And this was an activity where they had to kind of put up old photos of themselves and just kind of show the, the human anatomy growth, just a cool thing. And she said she had a lot of success with kids putting in their old photos and it was very cute. And a lot of the kids had, you know, a great time at seeing their, their, their primary school photos and things of that nature. You can click, Tim. Uh, this is another example of trying to do as many different hands on activities. When we were, when we had the day where we had to get a few things. Mrs. Guerin did a great job of making sure all the students could get a hold of their plants. So they could then take what they were doing in the greenhouse for horticulture and then taking those, those plants home and caring for them at home. Uh, the next slide, please, Tim. Uh, this is foreign language they have been doing and there's actually some eighth grade material in here as well. Foreign language. One thing I wanted to say about foreign language that I got directly from the department that is how collaborative the department has been at working together and sharing of materials. Again, I'll just highlight the, the collaboration in this time of isolation, how collaboration has gone up. It's, it's, it's a wonderful thing and it's great to see because when you're sharing best practices, it just makes everyone a better teacher. Uh, Tim, you can click. And again, different types of activities that they're trying to do, you know, using Zumba and, and other different things. You know, just again, trying to get kids so they're not constantly on the computer and just trying to do as many different activities as they can to get kids engaged, learning hands on activities, but still, but still learning. Okay, Tim, you can click. This is an example of how a lot of staff have been setting up kind of what they're expecting. Students almost like the daily calendar that helps even at the high school level, students can get overwhelmed. So even at the high school level, they need it broken down so they can pretty much know what they need to do. And of course, if a student really wants to be the go getter, which they might at high school, they might finish Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday on Tuesday, and that's fine. But somewhere they, they, they need it broken down or they'll get lost. So this is just an example of a daily schedule that is used by the Unified Arts by Mrs. Giuliani and Mr. DePerry. Mr. Santry, you can click the next slide.
But for the most part, it evens off and you can see the drawing. The three characters that I'll be drawing will be utilizing, of course, our simple shapes, the square, the triangle and the
And Mr. DePerry, because Mr. DePerry is fantastic. He started his own YouTube channel to get kids to, you know, stay interested in the arts. So many teachers have done things like this to, to keep kids engaged. You know, there's so many things I had to leave out because I didn't want Tim tapping his watch when I got to seven minutes. So there's so many things I would love to highlight for you. So it's re, it was really hard. The hardest thing for me was to condense this down, but there are so many different examples of, of teachers trying to engage with kids. And I think you guys are all getting a great snapshot from the primer all the way up to the high school. Uh, Tim, you can click the next slide. One thing that is, I am so happy that we were able to do, a couple of years ago, we still use the old paper course selection sheet. I wanted to get away from that when I became principal and I wanted everything to go online. I wanted students to register the courses online. I can't tell you how thankful I am that I did that because that's what we're doing this year. And I couldn't imagine trying to walk through students. It's going to be difficult with eighth grade and ninth grade. They're going to need a refresher course. We're going to do some Google meets and do some videos on how to do that to help out the eighth graders and ninth graders so they can register for courses. But for the most part, I'm, I'm sure sophomores, juniors will know kind of what they're doing because they've already been through this. But obviously they can still attend the Google meets and all those videos that we're going to create. Mrs. Cavioli, the, the department head for the high school for guidances. I'm working very closely with her and Mrs. Scott to try to put all this together to make it as user friendly. Because we still have to, you know, schedule the building and, and get kids with recommendations and, and get kids into classes that, that we need to get them into. So that is still ongoing. We're doing that and we're, we're on course. So I actually, I'm, I don't feel, you know, right now as rushed, depending on what happens. Because I usually like to get a schedule in the hands of every student on the last day of school. But, you know, depending on what happens with guidelines and whatnot, I might not have that opportunity. And they might just have to show up hopefully back in September, depending on what happens. And that's when they might get their schedule. I'll be ready to roll with whatever we do. But the, the scheduling is, is ongoing and we'll, we'll get that done. Tim, you can click the next slide. And this is just an example of, of some feedback from parents. There was other feedback, but again, I was just trying to, you know, narrow it down. But, you know, just hearing these, these thank yous are really heartfelt. I reached out to these families to make sure it was okay to use this. And they said, absolutely. Tim, if you want to click the next slide, that's just some student feedback on how things have been going. So, you know, it's really nice when you're, you're working hard and, and that's acknowledged. And, you know, I, it's, it's also nice that, you know, the students are feeling like there's been a lot of effort as well as the families, because that's really who we're working for is those students and those families. So it's good to hear that feedback and it's good to kind of acknowledge to the staff that, you know, yep, they know you're working hard, keep it up. Because it was, at times the staff was feeling overwhelmed. They certainly were because it was a lot to learn in a very short amount of time. So. Tim, I think that's it. Is there another slide? I think that's
That's it, Mr. McGrath.
That's it. So any questions?
Does anyone have any questions? If we could unshare that, that would be good. So we could see everyone.
So Brian Layton here. Uh, thank you for the presentation. That was great. Uh, one question I had, it might be more of the whole ad, but when a student isn't doing anything on, online, you're not seeing any work done. At what point do you identify those students and reach out to the parents?
So we have a pretty solid procedure at LMHS that we're kind of following as, as an entire school. Their first reach out is going through guidance because we want to make sure that everything is okay. You know, the teacher will check in and then if the, the teacher doesn't hear anything back, guidance will then reach out to the student. Then it would fall on, if, if the, if the student doesn't respond to guidance, then it would fall on one of the administrators to reach out either via phone or email. Because it could be a number of variables why they're not able to access. Their Chromebook could be broken, they could be sick. I mean, there's a number of reasons. So we want to get to the bottom of it as quickly as we can because we want to help. Because if the student doesn't, is having Chromebook issues, we want to make sure we get them in touch with our IT department so they can get on the schedule to get a new, you know, Chromebook so they can access their learning. You know, we would also, if, if we're not getting responses at all, we could certainly send the resource officer by the house to make sure everything is okay. But that would be, you know, probably a last step procedure. But there would be many different pitfalls. Of course, if the student had any special ed services, those liaisons would absolutely be reaching out as well. But we have a entire spreadsheet that Mrs. Scott created, which is helpful because it's all in one spot to keep track of how many times we've reached out, who's called, who is called, what day, what phone call, the times, the dates, how many times. And then, you know, we are constantly gathering that data and, and hopefully we'll get feedback from the family in some way, shape or form. Because ultimately we just want to help. You know, we don't want it to, that's why we're having guidance reach out first because we don't want it to seem like a disciplinary thing because there could legitimately be a reason why that student is not engaging in the learning. And we want to try to help that student, whether it be a Chromebook issue or a sickness or a Wi-Fi issue or whatever the case may be.
Thank you.
Carol, do you have any questions? Any comments?
Um, I just would comment that once again, I'm, I'm very, very impressed with what's going on. I also was impressed by the thought that as difficult as it is to get everything running and building the plane as you're flying it. There, there was some mention of a great deal of thought going into what happens when things get back to normal, hopefully by the fall. And that Mr. McGrath had mentioned how they were going to work on reinforcing some of those math skills that would have been difficult to reinforce in this particular manner. So I have to say that, that I have to give them a great deal of credit for as difficult as it is to tread water looking ahead at the same time.
Yeah, forward thinking. Jim, do you have any comments or concerns?
No, I think that, that I've heard, it's been impressive, yes, all along. You know, I think that there's probably an opportunity for us when it comes time next year in the normal world, maybe, that we can leverage some of these videos that the teachers
Yeah.
Mr. McGrath mentioned it took an hour to get a 15 minute video uploaded. And that's something that we can leverage going forward. And not have to recreate the wheel. If, if we need to, you know, say for additional help. You know, I've got that video for, to show you for additional help, that kind of stuff. I think there's some opportunities there that we're maybe not seeing right now. But overall, I think there's a, a great opportunity to expand the offerings and the, the abilities for our students.
Yep, agreed. Wendy?
I think it was just great to see at the middle and high school level, the, the attention to the social emotional well-being and the connection for students, like around the Spirit Week. Because I think at that, you know, that for those students, that's, you know, that's another piece of the puzzle for them. So it was great to see some attention put there and, and to have students be engaged with that as well.
Yep.
And who knew that I remembered my senior year geography 35 years ago. But I've been, I've been teaching geography this week. On iXL, so I'm, I'm learning.
So we do have an update from Mrs. Hanscom for special ed as well.
Great.
Share my screen. Okay, so in addition to all of the special ed teachers and the paraprofessionals being a part of those Google classrooms are having their own Google classrooms. They're doing Google meet sessions for small groups and one to one services. And then behind the scenes, every special ed student will need to have a remote learning plan sent home to their families that will talk about what goals are being addressed through their IEPs and what those services might look like. And this is a requirement from the state that we have to do that for every special ed. Are getting that together this week. Parents should begin seeing it today into next week. And I just put down a couple of the examples of what those remote plans would include. So you see here, they've got the goals and objectives in this child, or the goals in this child's plan. And then here are some of the services that the, that the teacher is utilizing to help address those. So the parents are really clear that even though we're not following the IEP grid services exactly because we can't replicate that online, we are making sure that they're addressed through this remote learning opportunity time. And then here's another example here. On this student has OT support, speech and adaptive behavior. And then you can see here how the teacher is making sure that parent knows how that's being addressed. In addition to all of this instruction that's going on and the remote service learning plans, I think I did mention in our last meeting that I was presenting that we are moving forward with IEP meetings. Not every district in the state is doing that. We in Lunenburg have chosen to do that. So we're moving forward with some annual meetings and some revales and initial meetings as well where the testing's already been done. And that's been, that's been very beneficial. I've had, what I've done at the end of all of the meetings is I'm sending out a parent survey so we can get some feedback on that from parents to see how those Zoom meetings have been going. And we've gotten some great parent feedback responses on, on the Zoom meetings. And in fact, some parents have even said that they like the Zoom meetings better than the in-person meetings because they feel like it's much more organized as far as, you know, we're really focused in the Zoom meetings on going through it and having the team members are all there participating, which has been very good. And the only other thing that I wanted to bring up too, just to let you all know is that we have created a parent website in special ed for the COVID-19 information and what LPS families need to know about, about special ed. And what I've tried to do, rather than emailing parents all of the time and telling them updates, I've, I've sent them two letters as of yet now and they're here on the website. And then I've also got some resources for them. I've also got the US federal links and our state links if parents have questions about that. And then I've got informations by topics on what are we doing for their IEP services? What are we doing for meetings? What about progress reports? What about MCAS? Or if your child's in and out of district place, what does that look like? So I'm really happy that we've been able to pull this together and have kind of a one stop shopping for parents. So if they do have questions, they know where they can go to, to find that information right away. And that's it from a special ed standpoint.
Any questions? Wendy? Jim, no one?
I was, I was saying, I think it's great that you're reaching out to everybody individually as well. So, thank you.
Yep. Wendy?
Has there been good success with the IEP, the Doom IEPs?
Fantastic. You wouldn't even believe it. I like
Fantastic. You wouldn't even believe it. I like, I was really hesitant to get started with it. And so, I offered up to my team chair person, said I would, I would share the meetings initially because I wanted to really be a part of that process and be able to work with some of those glitches. And then what I did that following week is I had the team chairs join in a meeting to see how I ran it so that we're all running them pretty much the same way. And like I said, I'm, I'm glad I put that survey in place because some parents came back and gave me some great advice on how to tweak it a little bit, even with security features before even the Zoom bombing went on. Come in and send me some information back on, hey, make sure that you check this off and make sure you, you have this setting set on it. So, because some of our parents are more tech savvy than we are. And so, it's been, it's been really helpful to get that feedback from the parents. And like I said, ninety to one hundred percent of them so far have answered that on the thing, on the survey, that they strongly agree that it's been a great experience for them. Oh, good.
That's fantastic.
So, maybe that's something you'll continue going forward, Zoom meetings with the parents. It might be more practical for them too, sometimes not to have to go to the school, but just have We've always offered phone conferences for parents, but, but we, I do like the interaction on the Zoom to still have the base. And we have even offered with parents, if they don't want to do the face-to-face, we can still be Zooming and they can participate and just turn their video off. Okay. But one has participated via video and audio. So, it's been, it's been, it's been great so far. Yes, because everyone's deprived A whole new world, so to speak, for when we reach out, what may, what may, may, may make more sense for some families. Yeah.
Excellent.
And people are deprived of seeing other people, so they want to see everybody's faces. That's true. Look, everybody wants to see everybody's faces. It's, it's, you know. So, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kate, anything else?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to all of our administrators for pulling together a phenomenal presentation on, you know, what remote learning looks and sounds like just a, just a week, a little more than a week in. I just, I, I, I've been saying it for weeks, you know, folks have been working really hard. We're all learning. You could see even this evening in the context of this meeting, how we were learning from each other, how to get the sound on the presentations. And it, it really is extraordinary. And I, I, I really do believe that this, this event forced a lot of change. And I think the change has been good in, in many, many ways. And I think it, it really and truly will change the way teachers teach moving forward. You can't unknow what you now know how to do. So, I, I think that, you know, if and when we, we see a return to normal, it, it's not going to look exactly as it did before, which is not a bad thing. I think we've, we've learned some really effective tools for engaging kids and for working together as adults even. So, thank, thank you all. And, you know, again, thank you to all of the staff who, who have done just extraordinary things in, in a short amount of time. It's really amazing to see.
Yep, thank you so much. And thank you for your time this evening.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, seven minutes, seven minutes? I don't think so.
Only a guideline.
It was too much wonderful to squeeze into seven minutes.
I know. Thank you so much. We appreciate all the hard work that you are doing. And it's so nice to see the kids engaged again. Right. We all, like, one of mine has such structure. It's great. I love it.
That's great. Thank you. It's good to hear.
Thanks. Thank you. So, thank you. Okay, so, now we're going on to reports. We only have a couple. Carol, finance committee?
They met last Thursday night and the discussion, well, there was a lot of discussion, but it was pertinent to us. The cash flow is okay through the end of this fiscal year, it appears. They don't see any big problem getting to, to June 30th. Representatives Hay, Hay's office is looking into why the Monte Tech assessment was so heavy on Lunenburg. And they're trying to schedule a meeting. They're continually, continue to try to set this meeting with FinCom, the Board of Selectmen, Representative Hay, and Senator Tran to try and figure out what happened with the formula that we got hit so hard. And then they also stated that the project at the Passios Building is on hold.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Any, any questions for Carol, coming to school committee? No? Okay. So, then it's capital planning. Jim, did you have a meeting?
We were supposed to have a meeting today. We did not make the timeline for the agenda to be posted. So, it will be tomorrow afternoon at four PM. It is an open Zoom meeting, so members can, the public can attend as well.
Okay.
We'll be talking about the possible changes to the funding of the capital plan and the review of the prioritization. As everybody's aware, we're looking at the budget from fresh eyes again. So, this is part of that budgeting process that will probably result in some changes in, in, in the capital plan that was approved earlier this year.
Yeah, approved by Capital Planning Board, but not Town.
Correct.
Yes, yeah.
Or it was recommended by, yeah.
Right, correct, yes. And everything was funded at that time.
Correct.
So, it's most likely not, some of the stuff won't be funded.
It's very likely, but
Yeah.
Let's see what the deliberations are.
Okay.
And the guidance from Town Manager.
Okay. Well, so that's tomorrow at four o'clock and it's open to the public.
Tomorrow, four o'clock, open to the public. The agenda has been posted. It is not this Zoom meeting number. It's the other one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And now, we're on to public comment that is open to anything school committee-related. Do we have any public comment from the, the committee? No? Any public comment from the public that's viewing? Do we see any hands raised?
Yes. Mr. Passios?
Mr. Passios. There he is.
Dave Passios, 56 Wedding Street. I just wanted to add a comment to the discussion about the refunds on the DC trip. Obviously, I don't have kids in the school district at this point. My kids went through a number of years ago. But I can remember as a parent that if I made a commitment to something like the DC trip and I had to cancel out or we had to cancel for unexpected reasons, I would not expect a non-refundable deposit to be returned. Under the circumstances that we're operating today and going forward, I believe that the school committee or the administration should push really hard to get the travel agency to negotiate something better than what they're giving us now or giving you now. They're a small business. They're going to be helped out by our tax dollars going forward to stay in business. Part of that will be reimbursement for losses such as these deposits. And just because everybody else is accepting the fact that they're saying, "No, we're not refunding it," we should be the one to forge forward and say, "No, we want it refunded" and push as hard as possible for the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Passios. Does anyone else, do you see anyone else raising their hand?
I do not.
Okay, then, we just need, we have another meeting planned? Do we have another meeting? Is it May? Or do we need another meeting before that?
We've scheduled the budget hearing.
Yeah, what day did we?
For Wednesday, April 29th.
The 29th, okay. At seven o'clock?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, that will be our next meeting, would be the budget hearing on the 29th. And that will take up the entire meeting, correct?
I, I don't foresee anything else on, on the agenda, just the hearing.
Does anybody else have anything to add? No? Okay, so I'll just take a motion to adjourn.
Ryan Leighton, I'll make a motion to adjourn at nine oh one.
Wendy, one second. Toss it up. Who wants it?
You can have it.
Jim Ovek, a second.
All in favor? Roll call vote.
Mr. Ovek?
Right.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
And Mrs. Schrocka?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night everyone. Good work, Ron.
Good night.